All right. Good afternoon and welcome to our next in a series of podcasts with the Journal Star editorial board as we interview each of the 15 candidates for at-large Peoria City Council. I'm Associate Editor Chris Kergard. Executive Editor Dennis Anderson is with me.
Good afternoon.
And today, we are speaking to Peter Kobach, one of the candidates for at-large City Council. Peter?
Thanks for having me.
Thank you for being here. Start off by telling us a little bit about yourself and what's motivated your run for council.
Yeah. Well, thanks again for having me and then providing this opportunity for the candidates. So, my story starts with, I'm a first-generation American. My parents are immigrants to this country. They immigrated from Poland when it was a communist country, and they were living under an oppressive regime there. My dad was part of the solidarity labor union movement there. And in 1981, when martial law was imposed on the country, he took a nonviolent action and was put in prison for five months as a political prisoner. So, that is the story that sort of I've grown up with and has been a big piece of my identity is that my family has stood up and fought for the things that they believe in, for their community and for democracy. So, throughout my life, I've tried to live up to that ideal that my parents have set for me. In 2008, I organized for Barack Obama for his first presidential run. In college, when I was studying, I organized my fellow students around tuition affordability to make sure that getting a college education wasn't just reserved for the rich. And when I graduated, I was a full-time organizer for a statewide criminal justice reform campaign. And over the last few years, I've done something a little different. I've worked here in City Hall in Peoria. So, I've worked for the city of Peoria. I worked on the innovation team, which was a team that was tasked with looking at the biggest challenges facing the city of Peoria and finding innovative solutions to those challenges. So, I worked with firefighters, with police officers, with folks from Public Works and Economic Development, and some of the other departments that we don't hear about as much, like Human Resources and the Legal Department and Finance. And we did some pretty amazing things that I'm hoping to talk more about today. But throughout this process, I also worked with City Council members. And although sometimes we were starting to name some of the biggest challenges in Peoria, we weren't really addressing what government's role is going to be in solving them. I wasn't seeing that leadership from our elected leaders. I didn't think that we, as a city, had a direction that we were moving in, that we had a common identity with a purpose. So, first, I went to some other folks who I thought, "You're really passionate about Peoria. Maybe you'd consider running in this election." And I talked to maybe 10 or 20 folks, and the responses they gave me was, "Politics are dirty. It's a machine. You don't want to get into it. I don't want to..." They were telling me, "I don't want to get into it." And after a while, I realized that, you know, I need to set an example of what an elected leader can be like. If I'm not seeing it, and the people around me don't want to step up to that position, then I would. And, you know, I've been, I was reflecting on making that decision and realized that my dad spent about five months in prison, and that the campaign from the time that I announced to the election is about five months. And I'm not trying to compare the situation, but it helps me think, you know, this might be an uncomfortable thing to a certain extent. I stepped down from my job at City Hall to run because I thought it was a conflict of interest. So, my budget has changed. I'm living much more frugally. I'm driving Uber on the weekends and weeknights to make ends meet. But whenever I think, you know, this is uncomfortable, or this is hard, I think back to my parents, and my dad especially, and what did hard mean for him, and what did uncomfortable mean for him?
Did you grow up in Peoria?
No. I'm originally from Cincinnati, Ohio. I first moved to Illinois when I went to undergrad in Loyola, at Loyola Chicago. And even then, I moved around a little bit. I got my master's degree in Europe. I studied in Italy and in Poland. I studied human rights and democracy. That's what my master's degree was in. And then, after that is when I moved to Peoria and began working in City Hall.
What brought you to Peoria?
I had been moving from big city to big city, living in Chicago and living in Europe. And big cities provide a lot of fun, a lot of things to do. On any night in Chicago, you can find anything to do. But I was missing a sense of community. I was missing a way to really connect with the community. And at the time, I was in a relationship with someone from Peoria. And when we considered where we were going next, Peoria fit the bill of a place that had so much potential and so much opportunity for growth and excitement, but had a community that was really easygoing. And people who were just interested in getting to know you for who you were, not what your entire career path might be. So, it felt like that place that I finally wanted to sink my roots down into. And that's what I want to do. But over the past, you know, last year, I started counting, and I reset the counter this year. But last year, about 18 people that are close to me in my life, friends, neighbors, moved out of the city of Peoria. And often, it wasn't because they lost their job. It was because they thought there was more opportunity and hope in another city. And I don't want to be in a position, five or 10 years from now, where I'm considering the same thing, because I look around me and not much has changed. So, I thought, you know, if I believe that this city can realize its full potential, then I have a responsibility to step up and help it get there.
Let's jump into this, to the issues now.
Yeah.
The city just went through a budgeting process that, where they made a lot of tough decisions. City Council cut some important positions, police and fire, instituted a number of fees that aren't really, people aren't happy about, from stormwater and property fees. What did the city council do right, and what did they do wrong in that process?
So, I think, I think we need a new strategic planning process at the city. While I was a city employee, I sat in on strategic planning meetings, and I saw that our strategic plan is sort of like a laundry list of potential projects. I believe we need a more focused strategic plan that encourages us to really think about what role will the city of Peoria play in the next 10 or 20 years in Peoria. Not tweaking different services that we already have, but starting from a blank slate, imagining what are the possibilities of government in the next 20, 25, 50 years. I think that conversation hasn't happened yet. And so, when the budget discussions happen, we look at tweaking line items in the budget. For example, I'm an advocate of performance-based budgeting, which is a different budgeting process that cities and states are beginning to take on. And that looks at, what's the outcome that we want to achieve? So, we start with a strategic plan that identifies our priorities as a city. Do we want to be a compassionate city, a green city, a sustainable city, a healthy city? And then, what does that mean? Does that mean better health outcomes for our residents? Does it mean fewer traffic accidents? Does it mean more walkable neighborhoods? And then, we fund the programs that produce those outcomes the best, not simply tweaking old programs. And when you start from that strategic planning process, and you identify what your priorities are, and then you fund the things that achieve the outcomes that you're looking for, I think the budgeting process becomes more smooth. It's not simply 11 people around horseshoe advocating for one line item or another, because they've come to some sort of cohesive agreement about what the priorities of the city are. For example, I think we need to redefine what public safety means in our community. Imagine how we might allocate our funding differently. If we measure a successful fire department by response time versus by how many calls we get. If we measure by how many calls we get, and we can reduce the number of calls that the fire department needs to go on, that allocates budgets differently than if we measure a successful fire department based on how fast they got to a call. I'm just throwing that out as what the potential of redefining public safety means. When it comes to our police department, if you look at in the last 15 months, three black men have died at the hands of police in Peoria. And when the police department and the state's attorney's office took a look at all those cases, they found that proper police procedure and policy was followed. Now, to me, that's a wake-up call that we're not defining the role of the police department correctly. We need to consider what the outcomes we want in our city are, and what programs fund those. And in this budget process, and in past budget process, we've often cut programs that build trust with the community and build a more representative police force. And to me, that's a signal that we're not prioritizing those things. So, that, I said a lot there, and I don't know if I got to all of your-
You didn't answer my question.
Yeah.
Let me ask you to unpack one part of that as far as public safety. And, you know, we're coming off a year that was a record-tying number of homicides in recent history.
Right.
This year, along with 2010 and 1989, both of which had had multiple fatalities in arson fires, so arguably, this was the bloodiest year for deaths in Peoria in a good long while. What should the police department be doing differently specifically in order to reach some outcomes that have not only fewer shootings, but fewer homicides?
Well, so, and Dennis, thanks for pointing out that there were some things I didn't answer in the last question. I'll just get to Chris's point real quick. I think to assume that the police department is the only department in charge of reducing homicides in the city is where we make our first mistake. I'm an advocate of raising our minimum wage to a living wage, because I don't believe that more police officers on the beat prevent people from shooting one another. Those things happen when people don't have another option, when they don't have another choice, when they don't have a job that pays them enough to make it a better gig than dealing dope on the corner. So, when we take a look at what outcomes we want, say those are, you know, reduced homicides, what are the programs that are best suited, and policies that are best suited to reduce homicides based on research? And don't just consider the police department. Consider the Economic Development Department. Consider what policies we can put into place. Consider how we can build our roads to reduce traffic fatalities. It depends on what outcomes we want, and then that points us to what programs and policies we need. I think we're making a mistake when we only link the number of homicides to the number of police officers we have. And so, to your question, Dennis, you know, what did they do right? What did they do wrong? I think what they did wrong was not have that strategic planning process in place. If you were to throw me in, you know, in December 4th and make me, force me to make a decision, you know, that's a tough position to be in, because I would have done things differently for the four years preceding that decision, that I will work on once I get elected to make sure that, as we're going into future budget cycles, we have a different perspective and a frame of reference for making those decisions. I believe that, you know, our pension obligations need to be met, and that's a cost that we need to consider. And then, when we need to raise revenue, then that revenue should be raised for a city service that we're making the case for. So, if we, to balance our budget, we need to raise revenue, then I believe that revenue needs to, the case needs to be made that we need to raise revenue to ensure that X program is still funded, because that's a priority that the city has set with input from citizens and with input from city staff and community leaders.
Isn't that exactly what they did this time by previewing the public safety pension fee months ahead, voting on it, telling people that this was something they needed? And even, you know, you argued in your questionnaire that they need to have equitable and progressive tax structures for that. Isn't that what they ultimately ended up with, with multiple gradations of cost for that, that end up charging people more who have larger properties and adding more gradations than they originally had to it?
It's a bit of a, I think it's a bit of a blunt tool to base it simply on the size of the property. There might be some correlation between the size of your property and the value of your property and your income, but that's, to me, it seems like a bit of a blunt tool. If we started with a perspective of equity, I think we would have come out with a different fee structure. Now, I don't, I don't have that perfect fee structure. I think that requires, you know, sitting down with the finance department and thinking that through. But there's no guarantee that once you jump from one stage to another that, you know, that all those people have higher incomes than the folks in the other category. So, and I think what was different is that we made the case for that fee to pay our pension obligations. I think we have an obligation to pay our pensions, and if we need to raise revenue, then we need to make the case for what that revenue, what city services and what outcomes those revenues will produce. So, say that one of our highest priorities as a city might be reducing poverty in our disinvested neighborhoods, then these are the programs that are most likely to achieve that. Here's the case for making a revenue increase that allows us to achieve a reduction in poverty. I think that's the case that I would make as an elected leader to residents that wasn't made through this process.
Okay. One other thing, since you raised that issue of dealing with poverty, which is particularly prevalent in some of the older neighborhoods across the city, one of the challenges, I would argue, that City Hall has faced in tackling those issues, which have also gotten the city listed on the 24/7 Wall Street report every year for the last five, has been getting residents in other areas of the city to care about that and to feel as though they have a stake in improving conditions in areas of the city where they don't live. What can you, as a council member and City Hall in general, do to help make that case better and get the buy-in to achieve action?
Yeah, that's a good question. I want to start with some context around, you know, why we have poverty and why we have segregation in Peoria, because I think that's important to building a solution that works. After World War II, our city began expanding north. We annexed enough land so that between about 1950 and today, we grew from 12 square miles to 48 square miles. We built the infrastructure for that land ostensibly to capture growth or people that were moving away from the urban core.
Yeah.
Yes. What was simultaneously happening was that, simultaneously happening was that the federal government was providing federally-backed mortgages for folks around the country. And they practiced a policy called redlining, where if you wanted to build a home, if you were a person of color and you wanted to buy a home in a predominantly white neighborhood, you would not be allowed to, because it was part of the federal formula that a person of color moving into a white neighborhood would reduce property values. Not based on their income, not based on their background, based on the color of their skin. So, as Peoria is growing north, it's harder for people of color to move north and build the wealth that was being subsidized by the federal government. At the same time, in Peoria neighborhoods, you had new developments that had restrictive covenants in their deeds, which essentially said, "When this house is built, it cannot be sold to someone who is not white, to a person of color." And so, we have a history over the last half-century of expanding north and providing opportunities mostly for white people to build wealth in the north parts of our city. What's happened because of that is that in the South Side, in 61605, an area that used to have a population of around 40,000, is now hovering around 13,000 or 14,000. Now, when you look at our food desert, when you look at our schools closing in the urban core, those things are happening because the population there isn't, the population isn't there to support it, and the wealth has been allowed to leave those neighborhoods. I think this context is important, because it shows that this wasn't an accident. This was policy from the federal to the local level that made it easy for segregation and the concentration of poverty to occur. So, I say that because I believe that government needs to own its role, its history there, and identify, what is our role in reversing that? Band-aid solutions aren't going to desegregate the city, aren't going to reduce poverty in a great way. But what role can government play to ensure that we're lifting up those neighborhoods that have been disinvested from and declining for such a long time? I think when we take ownership of that and understand the narrative that happened, then people will start understanding the role that we all play in the city, ensuring our success. So, I think that context is really important. From another perspective, I believe that reinvesting in our urban core is going to benefit everyone in the city. Peoria's downtown is the region's downtown. And whether you live in Morton, or whether you live in North Peoria, or in South Peoria, Peoria's downtown is the hub of the entire region.
The downtown really isn't the problem, though.
Right. But the downtown neighbors, those zip codes that have the highest concentrations of poverty. So, when the downtown and the urban core prospers, then those neighborhoods that are adjacent to them will prosper too. So, the case, you know, I'm trying to lay out a historic case, a narrative for why the problems that exist are everyone's problems, and it's the role of government to play. It's governments, government should play a leadership role in reversing the history and intentionally doing so. And another sort of icing on top of the cake is that when we do that, when we invest in those urban core neighborhoods, because those neighborhoods, like I said, they're a stone's throw from downtown, we create a vibrant urban core that people want to spend time in, whether it's folks in Morton, North Peoria, the South Side, or visitors from out of town.
How do you educate the city council, city staff, and residents about what you're talking about here?
Well, the campaign is a good way of doing so. I'm bringing up these issues at public forums. I'm sharing them with the other candidates that are running. And I've knocked on about 2,500 doors so far in the city of Peoria. I'm planning on doing more than double that before the date of the election. So, you know, this campaign isn't about buying as many commercial ads, radio ads, billboards as it can. It's about creating meaningful interactions with Peorians and having those difficult conversations. Now, I don't have 40 minutes with every person that I, you know, whose door I knock on, but when I talk to someone, I bring up the biggest challenges that our city is facing: poverty, racial segregation, a declining population, and some ideas that I have for government to address those. And that, those need to be priorities. I think if we take those on, if we take on those largest challenges and own our role and how we got here, then we can finally build a future that is different than the one that we're living in. We can finally build a future where we don't have high levels of poverty, we don't have high levels of segregation, and we have a growing city.
Let me ask you about one of those ideas, and you cite this in relation to the money that the city is pouring into the warehouse district.
Yeah.
But it would seem to apply equally to improvements elsewhere in downtown, bordering some of those more challenged neighborhoods. You talk about using community benefit agreements to ensure essentially that some of the benefit flows into those neighborhoods, whether that's through jobs or other opportunity.
Right.
Talk about what that means and how you hold developers to those, unless they're taking a bunch of city money from you.
Right. So, community benefit agreements are a way, they're often used when the city is involved in a redevelopment deal. So, in some cases, the city doesn't have a lot of leverage, and we may not be able to exert as much influence. But especially when we are using some sort of city funding or city incentives, a community benefit agreement provides a structure for the developers and the investors to sit down with the residents that live in the neighborhood or right next door. And when we're looking at the warehouse district, we have massive investment coming in, and we have just a few blocks away some of the highest poverty in our state. The neighborhoods on the South Side, over the last century, built up the warehouse district. They live, those people lived their lives there. They have maintained the value. Even if it's depressed, they've maintained the value up to the point that it is now. I believe they need to see the gains that are happening as wealth is created in the warehouse district. Just as wealth was created in North Peoria for the few who are able to move north, we need to ensure that wealth is being created in those neighborhoods that join downtown. And you have a warehouse district on one side, and then you have the investment from the hospitals on the other that's right next to the East Bluff in the North Valley. So, an example of a community benefit agreement might be, yes, we're going to build this apartment, maybe five or six-story apartment complex. It's going to be mostly market-rate housing or upper-income housing, but the community needs affordable housing, so we'll reserve a few units in there for affordable. Or, you know, there's not a lot of green space in the area. The developer's going to ensure that there's a park that's built where this parking lot used to be. Or, another thing is, you know, the first floor is going to be all commercial. The developer makes a commitment that they will work to hire people who live in, say, 61605, if it's the warehouse district, or 61603, if it's maybe a hospital development on the other side of the urban core. So, that's one way the city can sort of reverse the trend that's been happening over the past two decades.
Quickly, I was looking at your form here, that you would talk, you were one of the community or the city facilitators during the meetings that they had around, talking about race and issues.
Yeah.
Were you, nothing's really come from that. Is that a frustration for you, or is...
Well, we haven't really, I mean, so, like I mentioned, we haven't really owned our role in racial segregation and racism in the city. We've diagnosed that there's a problem, which isn't too hard to do. And we've done the important, we've taken that important first step of gathering input from the community. I'm frustrated that we haven't, as a city, really taken on how we'll reverse the racial segregation and outcomes based on race that we have in the city. I mean, if you live in 61605 or 61603, you are, just by being born there, you have a higher likelihood of having respiratory illness or lead poisoning, poor educational, economic, and health outcomes, just by virtue of being born in those neighborhoods. The city has to play a role in reversing that. The community conversations on race were a first step, but if it's not a priority of the city to really take it on, and if that's not committed to somewhere as our identity, then efforts like that sometimes...
Would you work to make sure that there's a follow-up to that, that something has actually happened?
Yeah. And I think that's the, the strategic plan is sort of the tool that cities have to do that, to identify, you know, here are our top six priorities. One of them is equity, maybe racial equity. This is a focus, and this is how we measure it. We measure it by educational outcomes by race. And if they're, if there's a disparity there, then what are the programs or policies that we need to put in place to improve that number? But until we name that as a priority and direct city staff that that's a priority, from urban planners to engineers and public works to police officers, until it's named as a priority and city staff understand that it's their role to address racial disparities in the city, then we probably won't make a lot of progress.
So, what's the roadblock at City Hall to that happening? Because we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on a study that diagnosed the problem that-
Oh, yeah.
-anybody could see out there. We did these forums. We know that we need to start tackling these things. What is the roadblock to getting something done by way of setting a priority there?
I think it's two things. One, it's a culture change that needs to happen at City Hall. And I feel like a broken record saying this, but we haven't admitted that it's our fault, that it's our fault, and it has to be the role of government to lead us into what a better future will look like for the city when it looks, when you look at racial disparities and racial equity and poverty. So, until we take on that role, we can do all the studies, we can diagnose the problem, but we're just lamenting the problems without doing something about them. I think we need to revamp our strategic planning process. We've done it the same way for the past decade. I don't think it's as effective as it could be. So, I would suggest bringing in a new strategic planning approach that ensures that we have more community input than we've gotten in the past, more involvement from frontline city staff that experienced some of the problems firsthand, and then still leverage elected leaders, of course, and department heads in the city to bring their expertise to the table. And commit to something that is measurable. This is another, this is another issue, is that how would you know, as a Peorian, how well we're doing on our strategic plan? You don't. Nobody does. We need to do a better job of making that public, making it simple. I think if we have five to 10 priorities, and for each priority, we have about five high-level goals that we want to achieve, every year we can say, "We're making progress on this. We're not making progress on that. Here's what we're doing right. Here's what we're doing wrong." Otherwise, we're just, we're doing little projects here and there, and we're depending on a certain city staff person having a racial equity perspective, rather than the city of Peoria having a racial equity perspective, or a poverty alleviation perspective. So, I mean, that's sort of the nerdy sort of policy, government way of me approaching it. I have my- I have my ideas on how we can alleviate poverty, on how we can desegregate our neighborhoods, but for my ideas to really come to the table, we need a better planning process for the city.
Okay. The most important number you're going to have if you're elected to the city council is six. You need a workable majority of council members to agree with you on any of these things. I, I suspect you wouldn't disagree with me with the contention that, that there's certainly some, some old guard thinking among some members of the city council. How would you work with, with members who are, are there, who've been there a while, who may be getting elected or reelected, who have different perspectives, and bring them around to your way of thinking?
Well, the best way to ensure that fresh ideas and fresh perspectives are around the horseshoe is for people to come out and vote for candidates that represent that. So I'll start by saying that, that the greatest power in a democracy is held by the people, and if they like what I'm hearing or like what other candidates that are bringing a fresh perspective to the table are hearing, then they need to go out and vote. This is, you know, being recorded today on the first day of early voting. You have the power to change the, you know, what you called the old guard. That doesn't have to be just the status quo. We can actually change the folks that are sitting around the horseshoe and create a new set of, a new class of leaders for the city. Now, I'm also aware that in this election, we're only voting for five of the 11 people that are sitting around the horseshoe. I worked with city council members, with department heads, around culture change, around the strategic plan. I think I'm a good fit for, for working with what's already been happening. I've been in City Hall for the past few years, I've studied the strategic plan, I've been in meetings where it's been made, I've been in meetings with department heads, I've worked with folks from every department. I think I have a good grasp on the generalities of how government has been run, and I think I can forge connections over that with the current council members, and I have relationships with some of them just as a, as a city employee that was working under their direction. So I hope I can keep those relationships going, but also make an effort to change the culture on the city council. I think we, it's sort of, it, it seems like, you know, city council does the work every two weeks, or, you know, the second and fourth Tuesday of the month when they meet, but we're missing any sort of committee structure. I think we're missing a lot of collaboration and cooperation. That's the perspective I bring to the table. Can I guarantee it? No, because I'm one of 11, but that's, that's my hope.
Who changes that? Is that the city manager? Is it the mayor? Is it?
Changes what?
Who changes that?
The culture?
The culture. Who's responsible for changing that?
I'm only possible of changing myself and leading by example. I think, of course, the mayor has a lot of power to lead by example as well, and I'm looking forward to working with Mayor Artis in changing the culture around the horseshoe. It starts with myself, though. What sort of leader do I model for other city council members and for other people in the community to ask their city council members to act in accordance with that? I, I worked on a series of process improvement projects for city staff. So, you know, when you get into the budget, I think we have a lot of opportunity to save taxpayer dollars by making processes more efficient at the city. That's, that's a whole nother conversation, though, and I would probably just nerd out talking about that. But the reason I bring that up is that I learned early on that I couldn't, it wouldn't make a difference if I just told someone, you know, what they were, what they could do better. You know, you're doing this, you know, if you just did that. Because I didn't really understand everything that they are bringing to the table and all the baggage they have. But what I could do was spend time with them and model some sort of process improvement or culture change myself, and show that it's improving the way that I get my work done, that my team gets my, the work done, and work with them and be ready for when they say, you know what, I see that that's working for you, how did you do that? I think that same thing can be said for culture change at the highest level, at the elected leadership level. There's no, I don't have the power on day one to change, to snap my fingers and have culture change at the city, but I think what people are seeing at forums and when they meet me is that I'm authentic, I'm doing, I'm running based on my beliefs and my values, and that I really am hopeful that the best days for the city of Peoria are still ahead of us. So I hope my ideas bring other city council members on board, and culture change will happen, you know, one by one when that happens.
We're coming up on the, the tail end of our, our interview here. I want to ask you, you've gone through three or four forums at this point, you've been a declared candidate for, for two months now, been running for longer than that as you've been collecting signatures. What issues have we not talked about here that you think are big issues in, in the city that are going to matter a lot over the next four years?
Yeah, well, we, we didn't, you have been talking about this, but we didn't touch on it today, the cumulative voting and the district boundaries. I think another important topic is, I'm going to keep hammering it home, you know, what, what is the role of government in the 21st century and in the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years? What does that mean for us to redefine public safety and redefine the departments that have traditionally been a part of City Hall, based on where we want to be? Set a goal for 2050, what is our identity? What is important to us in setting that goal? And what does City Hall need to look like? Not based on what it looked like yesterday, but what is it going to have to look like tomorrow to get there? I think those are things that we don't talk about enough. We own, so much of the time we spend tweaking existing services and programs in the hopes of making a little bit of a difference, and when we do that, the larger forces at play, for example, you know, the systemic racism and institutional racism that exists in the city continues to, to play its role. Those are, those are two of the things that are, that are on my mind. I think that the, the forums that we've had so far are bringing up some really important issues. Yesterday's was on environmental justice and last week on racial equity. These are things that we haven't really grappled with as a city enough. So I think, I think we're doing the, the work of challenging our old assumptions and thinking about, you know, what's most important to us as a city.
Okay. Voters obviously have a choice to make on February 26th, and if you make it past that choice on April 2nd, why you instead of any one of the other 14?
Yeah, so I think, like I mentioned, I, I believe I'm showing myself to be a candidate that takes a systems approach, that, that looks at the context that got us to where we are, to make decisions about where we want to go. I, I think that differentiates me from a lot of the other candidates. Another thing, I have experience in a lot of different sectors that no other candidate holds in one package. I have experience as a community organizer, working with people and understanding the problems they face on a daily basis. I, I hadn't mentioned this yet, but I also worked in the private sector for a marketing agency for a few years as well. I've, so I know what it takes to make payroll and to grow a small business, and I have the experience of working in City Hall. I've spent more hours in City Hall than some of the incumbents that are running for reelection. I've spent time working alongside frontline staff, from firefighters, police officers, to public works employees and code enforcement aides. So I know how the puzzles fit together in City Hall. I've earned a master's degree in human rights and democracy, so not only are these things theories to me, but I've studied how institutions can protect human rights and build stronger democracies. And my story is one that, that shows that this is in my blood, too. My parents have fought for democracy in their lives, and I'm seeking to keep that legacy going in my life. Another thing I'll add, just finally, I didn't mention this the whole interview, but I'd be remiss not to. Along with the innovative projects that we did around the combined sewer overflow, we, when I worked at the city on the innovation team, we repurposed a vacant lot into one of the city's largest urban farms. We started a AmeriCorps program for opportunity youth that employed people who are out of work and out of a job, or out of work and out of school, between the ages of 18 and 24, to maintain our green infrastructure. I also pushed really hard to make sure that we were making data-driven decisions at the city. I started our first data science fellowship at the city, which brought folks from the fire department, folks from IS, the health department, and from the Economic Development Council together to take data science classes together. And it turned out, improving the time it takes to create reports in the fire department, so we went from days to hours, it saves our staff time. And I tried to take it to the next level by holding a civic hackathon at the city. So we had 50 or 60 people come in from the community and hack together a solution using publicly available data from the city to make our services better. I think this needs to be promoted more and more. I've talked a lot about, you know, policy and social issues. It all has to be backed up by data. So whenever I speak about something, I only, I'm only passionate about it because I've seen the data that backs it up. We have a lot of data at the city that we're not sharing. I would be an advocate, I am an advocate of an open data portal that shares that openly with the public. So you don't need to do a Freedom of Information Act request for every piece of data that you want. We put it out there. We also show how it's connected to the goals that we're measuring as a city. So I haven't heard any other candidate really harp on how important data-driven decision-making is, and I have experience at the city of, of actually putting that into practice.
All right, excellent. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you for having me again. Thanks.